I'd like to call the River County Council Meeting Board for the month of June. At this time, if everyone will please rise for our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Kevin?
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for a beautiful day, we thank you for blessing our town in such a good way, we had a good weekend. We ask that you would continue to pour out your blessings upon our town. In reference to your course to your purpose, we would like to give this to our children.
Amen. The nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, Chance, look at the agenda. It's already out. Edit what needs to be done to the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda, Ms. Allen?
I'll make a motion there.
Uh, pardon me, Mayor. We need to add for the opening of the seal of business. Sorry.
Hello, where do you business? I'll just make your category right there beside new business for, was this the the, the market for markets and bids? Okay, anything else? I have a motion. Is it received?
Received.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same say aye. Also, we need to edit and approve our minutes from the May 10th special council meeting, River Council meeting, and a Coller Council meeting, all three of those in May.
I'll make the motion.
So a motion for approving minutes is received.
Received.
Further discussion? All approves say aye.
Aye.
All approves say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the May's, uh, May's accounts payable assets, Kevin, or any additional, additional bills and accounts that has not been presented already?
No, sir.
Mr. Allen?
If no additions, the mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the May accounts payable presented.
All say aye. Further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same say aye. Okay. This time, I will declare some public hearing for, as advertised, for the fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two budget of the town. Is there anyone here that wishes to address counsel regarding the budget? Kevin?
Thank you. I'm calling it right now, and I would like to ask on behalf of the Russell County Public Library that you allocate to us the amount of money that you did a couple of years ago. You sort of backed down, and I'd like to ask that you go back up to your previous six thousand dollars. As you are well aware, the minimum wage has gone up and will go up again in January. So, we are feeling that effect.
Okay.
And we're trying to do what we can for the community. We've got a summer reading program, and we went and put up a story walk this morning. So, after the sun sets and it cools down, feel free to walk around and back and listen to a story, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Kevin. Any, uh, anyone else present that wishes to address the counsel during this public hearing? This time, I will close the public hearing for the budget. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
I understand we can adjourn to reconvene a week from tonight, seven days to approve budget. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
Can somebody remember at the end of the meeting before we go home, to make sure we adjourn to reconvene at six o'clock on the 7th, coming in on twenty-first? Okay. I kind of like using this today. This time, I will now declare some public hearing as advertised, uh, to, uh, hear comments regarding the cigarette tax ordinance for the town eleven. Let's see, did I say? Is Dustin on that list, though? You want to address us now regarding that, Dustin?
Yes.
This is a public hearing. There you go. Some nice information for every woman. Uh, you get one of those, do you get an extra?
Uh, yes, I will.
The agenda's right there.
Uh, I'm here now on behalf of the Russell County Prevention Coalition. As you all are well aware, the Coalition has been around for, went on seven years now. Uh, we have an overall mission to reduce substance abuse, especially among youth in Russell County. So, we are certainly in support of the cigarette tax. I did speak at the county public hearing when they approved their ordinance. Uh, so, in fact, it is some information that Mr. Lester assembled for the county about the tax rates from other localities. Uh, I think by code, the localities can assess up to forty cents per pack. Uh, so, all across different localities, they're going, some at the very top and some at the very bottom. Um, but also, including in fact, it is information from the campaign for tobacco for kids. It talks about the science and data behind increasing the price of cigarettes as a means to reduce, uh, the use of cigarettes by kids. Pretty substantial evidence that for every ten percent increase in the price of cigarettes, there is about a seven percent decrease in the use of cigarettes by kids, and about a four percent decrease overall among all people. So, Virginia has one of the lowest state tobacco excise taxes in the nation. Uh, until last year, Virginia was fifty out of fifty for state tobacco tax. Uh, it was just at thirty cents a pack. Last year, the state increased their state excise tax double to sixty cents. But still, Virginia remains forty-four out of fifty for their state cigarette tax. So, unfortunately, we do understand that local ordinances can only apply to cigarettes. They cannot apply more broadly to chewing tobacco and vape products, uh, which our data indicates is, is the problem more so in our locality amongst kids. Um, but anything we can do for environmental standpoint to make any tobacco product more expensive, better off, it will be for our children than with the prevention coalition's overall mission to reduce substance abuse. So, we do encourage you to adopt this ordinance, um, as, as high as you are comfortable building. Uh, I think what, what you propose is the same as the county's rate. Is that fair enough? Also, I want to bring to your attention on a related issue. Uh, whereas our coalition and Cumberland Mountain Prevention generally works across all substances, um, our community, uh, the combined efforts of everyone working together, the Russell County Public School System, Cumberland Mountain, all of our retail partners, uh, other agencies have worked really hard over the past seven years with the We Help Support Underrated Use Campaign. I'm sure you all are very well aware of. Um, use rates among all substances have declined significantly. We last conducted the Youth Risk Behavior Survey with sixth through twelfth grade students in our school system in twenty nineteen, and that, that indicated among all substances, vapes, traditional cigarettes, chewing tobacco, uh, and alcohol, those rates have sharply declined. Um, so, that's really wish it all, you know, better settled with that. Um, the problem that we're most concerned with now, of course, is youth depression, youth anxiety, and mental health issues. Um, the rates of students who have indicated that they're depressed or students that have attempted suicide or thought about suicide remains very high. Uh, if you're not aware, suicide rates in South West Virginia are two times the state and national average. Uh, it is very concerning. A lot of us have known people, students, that have had those sort of thoughts and behaviors, and we're always working to remove, uh, reduce stigma around getting treatment for mental health disorders and for depression. But also, with opioids, you'll probably have seen the information from the health department that twenty twenty is going to be the worst year on the record for opioid overdose fatalities. The rate is still very high in South West Virginia. Russell County, thankfully, not as bad as some of our neighbors, Buchanan and Dickinson especially. Um, of course, we are now seeing a influx of methamphetamine as well, fentanyl and opioid lifestyle with methamphetamine that's being trafficked, uh, across the border. Uh, so, as working on that, we're doing a lot more Narcan training. So, if you all can help us, if there's any avenue, any event, any opportunity where we could come and train people on how to administer lifesaving Narcan in an opioid overdose situation, we'd really appreciate it. Um, but getting back to tobacco. Uh, two years ago, the last page of your handout, a few years ago, the Department of Attorney's Office worked with Detective Kaiser on, uh, an operation, a compliance check on two of our vape shops here in town. Um, and both vape shops did fail that compliance check. Um, we have continued to see some questionable behavior, maybe not illegal behavior, uh, but certainly conduct that we would consider to be questionable about the conduct of these retailers. One in particular, um, who are more aggressively targeting minors in the sale of vape products. They're also now, uh, selling products that could be used to conceal vapes, uh, that students could take into school or hide at home, uh, from their parents. So, we, we are more concerned about that. So, we welcome an opportunity to work with Lebanon Police Department again on compliance checks, uh, this year. Um, and any other ideas or, or promotions that we can do to make parents more aware that these things are being sold in our town, uh, and the dangers of vaping and how the fatigue is just as addictive and cause adverse health outcomes as well. So, thank you all very much, please, adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, please.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. At this time, Ms. Hawes, would you, can you let us, uh, if we pass this? For the stand or, or, I read some of the, your, the beers you guys ready to go.
I'm ready.
Are you ready?
Yeah, but, you know, I'll just start with basically, you know, this is new to all of us, and I'm learning as I go. Well, I kind of learned a few things today that's a little bit different than when I actually wrote up on the outline here.
Okay.
But the stamps have been ordered, stamps are here.
Stamps are due.
Um, tomorrow, if the ordinance is passed, I do plan on sending certified letters to all the retailers with a copy of the ordinance, and also, I included in your packet, uh, the form letter that I will be sending, and also, it's basically an order form, um, for registration. But, uh, as far as I know, every retailer in our town has already registered, sell tobacco. If they want to keep selling tobacco, they can go along with this. But, um, if they want to use that order form each time, they can. Uh, one thing we might want to think about, do we want to invoice it each time that they place an order? I've been working closely with, uh, Lonzo has helped me a lot, and then Amanda Cantrell from Richlands has helped me a lot. She said that they don't allow her invoice there, that she's, I'm spread, she, and I just put a little example, those numbers are not correct. I just did something for your all's benefit. That, uh, she keeps track of those each time, and, uh, I'm very retail oriented, and I've done this before in all my years of retail. This is the perfect thing for me to do. I would keep track of everything that goes out. Uh, basically, what she says is her merchants send her the check, or either they show up to get them, and then she lists it, and they pay it. Uh, actually, I had, had put that I would do inventory, but I don't need to do that. Probably what I need to do, I would like to be the inspector for a few months or even permanently, and I'd like to take a police officer with me each time that I go. Um, during that transition phase, like on July the first, hopefully, they would have everything stamped. But I plan to go to each merchant, and any cigarettes that are not stamped, I'm going to come up with some little unique mark of my own. And the next time that I go back, if they still don't have those marked or stamped, then I'm going to know by my mark that I have on there. Um, I'm going to keep a number, like do a slide inquiry of how much that they don't have on that. But, um, I'm ready to go.
Okay. So, you would actually, I guess, uh, Jen's will be our, uh, uh, of course, or you'll be, what's the, the you're going to be over coordinating this tax and some compliance, you're going, and then you're going to work with the police department with Mr. Disck and his staff? Very good. Anything, any other questions for Jen while she's with us? Hearing now, do I have a motion to approve the cigarette tax ordinance?
Well, the county has already approved the ordinance.
Their ordinance?
Their ordinance. If we don't approve it in the town, they're going to get the town tax dollars.
Therefore, I make a motion to approve.
I'll say aye.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. Ms. Jen, it sounds like you can hit the ground running in the morning.
This is material.
When does this going to fail? Do you know how long?
July first.
Okay. All right. Now, we're going to move to one of the, a lot of times, we don't get this chance, but when we get the opportunity, we'd like to take the chance to recognize our citizens, employees. Uh, we had a, we've had an officer who has completed his training through the law enforcement academy. Uh, normally, they have a graduation in May, and we try to go. However, uh, under the COVID guidelines this year, we were unable to attend the, uh, John, that we, his wife didn't even get to get with. So, it was just him, and Eric, you don't substitute well, but, but you're the chief.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so, what we wanted to do, John, is to have you here formally in front of the council. Uh, we all want to thank you, and I'm sure every council member will have come in. But we're proud of your accomplishments, uh, and we work, we wish we were been able to be there to see you get your certificate out. The chief tells me those are about six weeks after the graduation or something.
We do, sir. I, I actually, if it's okay with the council, um, we've held off on introducing Mr. Jackson to his law enforcement code of ethics.
Okay.
And I had that in mind, so we just have code of ethics with him tonight.
That's new. That'd be great. You want to do, you announce that?
Just any time.
Go ahead.
If you'll go ahead and raise your right hand. As a law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve the community, to safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all the liberty, equality, and justice. I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all, and will behave in a manner that does not bring discredit to me or to my agency. I will remain courageous, calm, in the face of danger, scorn, or ridicule, develop self-restraint, and be constantly mindful of the welfare of others, honest in thought and deed in both my personal and official life. I will be exemplary in obeying the law and the regulations of my department. Whatever I see and hear of confidential nature or that is confided in me in my official office, I will keep secret unless relevation is necessary in performance of my duty. I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings, prejudice, or political beliefs, aspirations, or friendships to influence my decisions. With no compromise for crime and relentless prosecution of criminals, I will enforce the law courteously and appropriately without fear, malice, or ill, ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence, and never accepting gratuitous. I recognize the badge in my office as a symbol of public faith, and I accept it as a public trust to be held as long as I am true to these ethics of police service. I will never engage of act, I will never engage of acts of corruption or bribery, nor will I condone such acts by other police officers. I will cooperate with any legally authorized agencies and their representatives in pursuit of justice. I know that I alone am responsible for my own standard of professional performance, and I will take every opportunity to enhance and improve my level of knowledge and competence. I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives, ideals, dedicating myself before God and in my chosen profession, law enforcement. You accept?
I do. Congratulations.
I'd also like to, uh, make the council aware that we did receive Officer Jackson's final state certifications for the back end, finishing in the top ten of this class.
Uh, I'll start with council members. I'll start there and have a few last to the right, and open the floor for council members' comments to John, to Officer Jackson.
Uh, Officer Jackson, I'd just like to thank for your hard work, dedication. It's mentally and physically binding on an individual like you to get through a, uh, course like that. I've been there and done that. It's not fun. I just feel a lot of time away from your family, a lot of time away from your grandparents. I just want to commend you on, uh, on the excellence that you've contributed for the town.
Ms. Lam?
John, I'm just, I'm proud of your work ethic. Uh, proud to see you on the streets and how you treat people and conduct yourself. I know that Camden was hard on you. I told you I wish I could have been there with you and support you, and, uh, I got you back, and I'm proud of you.
John, I remember your interview. I mean, I remember how much you wanted to be a part of Lebanon Police Department, and every day since your employment with us, you have proven that. Through your hard work at the academy and your dedication and how, one thing you said is that you want to be a police officer to the people, and I see that when you're out there, and, and I hear that from people, from citizens, and I thank you for that.
John, congratulations again. We're very proud of you. Uh, and the other thing is, when we're out and about or in the crowd, it's not hard to find you. We, we know how, if we need you, we know where to find you. But congratulations, Ms. Jackson.
John, I congratulate you too, and I think you've done an excellent job, and you fit right in with our police department. And you've been doing great every day, and we appreciate it. You're nothing good, nothing except good about you. Thank you.
Mr. Fields?
John, congratulations. I've heard a lot of good compliments about you from the citizens. I've even heard some good compliments from, from the chief. So, don't wait until you ain't done good.
Congratulations. Proud of you.
John, congratulations, uh, for completion of the academy. Like the mayor said, we're very proud of you. Um, you, you seem to be an upright young man, and we're glad to have you on board. Um, I'll take this opportunity again to thank you for your military service.
Absolutely.
So, we're glad to have you on board. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, now, we have some other, we have some other young folks here who have accomplished, uh, a great success this year. Coach Colly, could you come up in front with me, please? I still get to call them now. That was one of our students that I had, and who's now teaching. But, so, I, if you would, for everyone that's here, tell us about these folks, and y'all had a great, great wrestling year.
Yes.
You went, uh, was you in the top three?
Uh, runner-up.
Runner-up, that's what it's up.
Uh, and that's never happened before in, in high school history. It wasn't too long ago that we'd, uh, we'd never had a state champion. Uh, and then we kind of broke through, and we got one state champion, and that kind of trickled down to where we got two. And then, this year, you know, we ended up with four. Uh, we go through and count four. I want to say, we had, Ian was at one twenty-six. Uh, we had our one fifty-two, we had our one seventy, and we had our two fif, or two twenty. So, we had four state finalists.
Yeah.
And we ended up with a couple of state champions. So, that was a big year for us.
Absolutely.
We were, and with COVID and everything like that, and the restrictions that these kids had to be put under, it's hard enough that, you know, you're asking a, a high schooler to sacrifice their time for practice, but you're also asking them to be disciplined enough to watch what they eat, to make sure that they're on weight consistently, and then to comply with COVID guidelines with everywhere that we went. Uh, it was really hard on them, and they were nothing but dedicated, and Coach Webb and myself and Coach Smith were nothing but proud of these guys for everything that they've done this year.
I agree, and we congratulate you. We have some certificates that we'd like to present. If you, you can let me know if everyone's here as I go. I'm going to read this first one, and then, uh, as we go, I'll call your name and your weight division. So, we'll start with Cole Jesse. Is Cole here? He is a state wrestling champion in the one fifty-two weight division. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
One fifty-two. Trent Ray. How are you, man? I'm going to stand here and read, you can hear just what he's saying. Is Mr. Jackson here? Whereas Trent Ray was successful in winning the VHSL two-day state wrestling championship, now therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the town council, that Trent Ray be hereby commended in becoming the two thousand twenty-one VHSL two-day wrestling weight class two-twenty champion. Be it further resolved, that Trent Ray be hereby committed for his commitment, dedication, and success this fourteenth day of June twenty twenty-one. Congratulations.
Do you want me to stay up here or do you have a picture?
Well, where's my photographer? Who?
Janice.
Oh, Janice Serena. Uh, you didn't know you were ready. Just kind of, if you would, just up here with us. Okay, is Ian here?
Ian is not, he's not here.
And Ian is the runner-up?
Yes.
In the one twenty-six?
Yes.
Weight division, is that correct?
Yes.
Fisher Martin. Congratulations, Fisher. Fisher is a second-place state wrestling, uh, finished second place in the state wrestling finals in the weight class of one seventy. Is that correct? Uh, but we want to commend you for your dedication and your hard work, particularly, as Coach said, in COVID, what a crazy, crazy year, and, uh, your success on this evening. So, congratulations.
Trent and Fisher, they were wrestling, they were practice partners.
Oh, were they? Through COVID?
Yeah, through COVID, yes.
Okay, Hunter Martin.
Did he have to work?
He looks a little tired.
You will give it to him. Uh, and tell us his weight, he was, he finished third?
Yep, third.
And what weight division?
One twenty.
One twenty, one twenty. Luke Childers. I got to talk about this one, but it's good to see you. His grandfather was my, my assistant principal for years. It's good to see his mom. And the last time I remember you, you and your brother, you would come to visit, and you were all over Coach Kaiser's discs. I mean, on top of the discs, in the discs, and trying to get a hold of candy, the best I remember. Luke finished, uh, third in the state wrestling tournament this year in weight class one thirty-two. Is that correct? Congratulations, big man. We're proud of you. And Jackson, Bones? And Jackson, uh, by the way, congratulations again, man. And Jackson, by the way, congratulations again, man. You finished fifth in the state wrestling tournament this year in the weight class 138, is that correct? The weight division, all right? Jackson Mounds, we commend you on your dedication and hard work during a crazy time that you all had to live through. So again, congratulations. Okay, let's see. We're gonna have to get that podium mail away. Can you get all those in here if we line up behind? Council come over and line up behind this line up, the government's way.
Is that what you're doing?
It's making you look like you're trying to.
Is that Ian down there on the floor? Those guys over, you can't, they're not gonna see you. They're all real cocky.
That'll make your rational turn to the hand.
It's okay.
You should probably cut.
I do.
I wouldn't push them.
I think she has a rational table.
Here or here?
No, stand down here on the floor with, beside the show, man.
It's a pleasure.
Yeah. Mr. Jackson's our last player. Can you kiss you all there? Can you get everybody?
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to get my hair. Okay. Cheese. Wrestling. Very good.
Thank you. Congratulations. Y'all have a great summer. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted Connelly.
Mayor, how many of those boys are grabbed away?
Uh, three. Yes, three. We have, the other ones are returning.
So it looks like we have a million awards for next year, too.
Cole, Cole was a state champion, he's returning. Ian was a state runner-up, he's returning, and Jackson is returning.
Okay, there we go. See you next summer, then, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I know we all may still be a little bit tired, but we've been having a great weekend. Kick off the first day of Cedar Fest, and we have Mr. Shane Farmer here with us somewhere.
Hello, Mr. Farmer.
Come on up, our podium, so we can wear you out.
Yeah, it won't take much.
Won't take much, huh? As you know, we were all around, and we've seen, talked to you, but for us and the group that's here, can you give us a summary of how the weekend went, Cedar Fest and how?
I think it, overall, went X. The feedback, I ended up doing a lot of shuttle running, the golf carts, I liked talking to folks, so I just decided I just, I saw him do golf carts, so I just started shuttling them. I started talking to people, I called the mayor earlier. I talked to people from a little bit everywhere. There was, there was one couple from Nashville that gave them a ride down to the Greg Center, and they were like, we just decided to come, we saw it. I'm not sure where they told me they saw it from, but they, they said they enjoyed the time, couldn't believe that, you know, we were running a shuttle system that take them all the way down there and all the way back, and they wanted to come back, so. And there was even folks from, you know, just over the mountain, Abing and Bristol, and, you know, and they were saying, you know, y'all really don't have a tree tree for you. It's just, it's a compliment to everybody that was, you know, working that day, and we won't be providing poor folks. The lady from Bristol said, you know, we got to rid of the roots every year, but we never had a shuttle like this. So, you know, just different little compliments like that, you know, that's, you know, the town provides that's, you know, just, just a little bit, a little bit more effort, it does go a long ways. So be proud that what you are, are doing, and what you're providing for the community and for the town.
Well, you have about eight or nine food trucks here, and I understand we ran out of food.
Yes, we had eight food trucks. Every one of them said, well, and a couple of them, Jason Barney, which is a smoke wagon, he said, Shane, I closed one of three times, went to the grocery store three times, came back, opened back up, sold out all three times. And there was another, a new one came from, from Abing, and that was Hot Mess Express, it was a little cabin thing down there on the lobby. I had contacted them about coming to Lebanon's events, and I told them, they, they said, well, how many is Lebanon's events really? And I said, well, when we have an event, just about every food truck we have sells that. Well, she called me after the event, and I told you about it. She called me after the event, and she said, Shane, you remember that first time you contacted us and told us, when we asked you about Lebanon events, and most of the food trucks sell out? She said, well, we thought you were just telling us that to get us over there. She said, she said, I want you to know, it was unbelievable. We were not prepared. And she said, we closed down once and went to the store, came back, and sold out again, and then we just didn't have anything left, so we shut down and said, well, we'll go eat at one of the other vendors. Wasn't the other vendors, they were out too, so she said, we piled up the truck, went out to town, ate at a restaurant. And that's another thing, too, is most of, every restaurant in town Lebanon was packed, so they can't say, you know, everybody's going out there to eat because they're getting business too.
I saw.
It's a win-win for the whole community.
Yeah. Somebody said they went to Pizza Plus, and they told us two hour wait list. Pizza Town, Pizza Town. Pizza Town's at the door. McDonald's up the line.
And Angie, the new milkshake place, she was opening her milkshakes up, she said she sold everything she had.
Well, you know, it gives us an opportunity, Shane, to build on the pluses, you know, it's, anytime we have an annual event, again, I remember this from some of my administrative days, you, you need to meet, we need to get together as soon as possible after the event, because what you like to do is identify the things that, you know, went right, that was done right, and then we start building a list, well, you know, there's some things we could have done different, we need to shuffle things around, and then you gotta add, people think, you know, the second week of June is a year, you know, this weekend's a year away, and that sounds like, you know, a long time. In this, in this world, it's not a long time in this business.
Right.
I mean, we're gonna have to start getting thoughts from council, and we'll start with Parks and Rec Committee, and of course, all council members for input on what we would like to do in the next year's event, which, for those of you who are here, we just need to make sure that, you know, the general public understands, we agree that this weekend is our annual date. We lock in, because when you start getting, trying to move weekends around with all the other towns, rounds, and events, you get knocked out, is what, you fall off the list. So we probably, I would ask council, and I'll talk to Deanna and the committee, this committee chair, we need to decide, we need to have a meeting pretty soon to start talking about, just as I said, those, the good, the things we could have done different, how we need to change, do we want to expand, if we want to keep it like it is, you know, and those kind of things. So with that, I'll be still my comments. Any questions or other comments from council, from Mr. Farmer?
I only heard good things about, about it, and several people that I had talked to from over Bristol, Damascus, Abingdon area that came to Lebanon just for the concert, and they, you know, said really good things. The one thing that I had talked to Shane about, I was worried about the food truck and how the food trucks were down there on Wall Street. But I talked to Hot Mess and the Donut People, and you said you play some there strategically, and they loved it down there. They, they liked being down there, and that what helped them out was the flow of traffic coming from that direction, that people had to go buy those food trucks. And said that it was a good, a good place for them. I know that I had said, maybe keeping all the food trucks in one area, and that might be something to look at later, you know, maybe keeping them all in the same area would be good, but when I talked to them, they were, they were happy with being in a different area. And so, just like Mr. Duddy said, I, we do need to start planning as soon as possible for next year.
It takes a good full year to plan.
And to get those contacts from, for the artists, to get them on that. But thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Jackson?
No, I had all comments, all your comments, and yesterday, the gospel singing was great, and Mr. Duddy and I were talking. It was very, very hot out there, but that did not keep people away, but we were talking maybe sometime next year, we could have indoors that part of it, and he thought maybe our theater might be open.
Hopefully. We hope, lots of. Any other comments from council members?
Mayor, I'll just say, Shane, thanks, and DP, Chris, Kevin, be sure to thank all the employees that participated and helped out. I mean, it's, we talked about a hot mess after the show was over. It was a hot mess down there. It was a little overwhelming, and when I drove through the next morning and everything looked like we didn't even have an event there.
I know. Amazing.
It was.
And I, I'll add to Scott's, because I even, we walked and we walked at the government center, you could not tell that there was something at the government center, you could not tell that there was something here, so excellent.
Well, as y'all mentioned, these things, as we all know, don't just happen, but I will say this, because we've been involved with it since we started our base at town. It often, it's events like this that prove to me the quality of employees behaving in this town and their work ethic, and we're certain, as Scott said, we're all very, very proud of them. Nothing but compliments from the performers, about our staff, and all the folks involved and that who are running, you get every time, you never saw them sitting still, they're going 15 different directions. I guess what was it, Scott said, a hot mess, but they were, I mean, everybody had a role, they know what the role was, but for this, to have this kind of event for our citizens in our region and our, our area, it takes good people working hard, a commitment from the government body to allow them to do that, and I appreciate the council for the support of our employees for these events, and the support of these events. It has so many pluses, people were, weren't they, they were so glad to get outside and be together again in fellowship, they, I mean, it was evident, and after the year we've had, and, you know, a town obviously benefits from it as well in the business world, businesses benefit from it, and it's an opportunity for the town to give things back to their citizens, and I think it's a great invention. And Shane, and all your folks, we appreciate you very much, but we need, before we leave tonight, if someone will remind me, let's start getting together, Kevin, and planning, get an idea of how we're gonna move forward to 22, okay? Thank you, Sean.
Chief, there's, thank you, John.
I'd like to piggyback on that.
Yes, we're, they had two events.
The PD, I had several compliments, some of you guys looking sharp, dress appearance-wise and being professional also, sanitation guys, streets department, everybody, people complimented how helpful they were and how welcoming the Parks and Rec staff was also, so I'd like to tell you guys thank you for that.
Thank you, John. You, you were so successful, you knocked the power out of him. Brunner did something.
Well, there wasn't, besides Sawyer Brown, I don't think there was a bigger star than Mayor Duddy.
Yeah. I left there, my wife looked at me when Sawyer Brown did that, she said, Scott Gilman. I said, who's done that to me? But hey, what I will say, I was unhappy, I mean, I was, I was very happy that Martin Miller knew my name and bragged to us, but you know, he did say something I thought was pretty good, you know, he was explaining, a lot of local counties just kept pushing their, you know, their schedule, and keep pushing them out, pushing them out, and, you know, we all sat here, we worried about COVID, we worried about the restrictions, and the government body, we all said, well, we've seen some of the guidelines, and we, we were good with the vaccine, once the vaccines began to arrive, and we stood, and everybody stood solid to move forward, and I think that's what he was saying, it helped, helped it, and it, you know, it's just, it's a win-win for everybody.
It's a big, big morale boost for the local community.
I agree, I agree. All right. We added under new business, street markings, bids, I had two, Ms. Lundy. Let me see who we got here. Now, this is Paynes, P-A-Y-N-E-S apostrophe S, excuse me, Parking Designs Incorporated, out of Bealeton, Virginia, B-E-A-L-E-T-O-N, Virginia. And I believe Kevin, the figure we're looking at is the, a map per foot, is that correct? 2,107 dollars and 39 cents. This, did I tell you this is Mr. Clatterbuck, Clatterbuck Paintings Incorporated, Cleveland, I feel pretty confident that this will be an easy decision. Again, their per foot cost, 56 dollars and 26. Another one's 2,000 dollars a foot, is that what it said?
Yeah.
Is that not right?
I can probably verify and make sure that's not a typo there.
Let's see any written looking. There's a lot of money.
Everyone waits to get up.
What does it say in that box right there?
Wow, it says per foot.
What was that one said?
56.
So, what we need to do is, as always, to compare apples to apples, so Kevin in Lyon Street Community Chair, I'd like for you all, is there a way you all can meet before we ask, since can we approve next month, is that?
Yeah.
Is that work? Okay. All right. Okay. There are you, Mr. Lincoln.
Good.
Guess what?
We ready?
It's your turn.
I appreciate you doing that. Everybody, yeah, this is easy. Yeah, I like the process.
Kevin, I was looking, do you anticipate your report to be lengthy?
Well, there's several items.
If it's agreeable with council, I see Bill Akerstir, Tom Brady, Bill, you want to come up before we get into the town legislature's report?
All right, well, I appreciate that. I'm gonna get out to the baseball game and see those pioneers win again.
Hope so.
Yes, indeed.
We can get out.
Yes, indeed.
We can get out. Oh, no. Well, they think almost six, though.
That'd be a bad before you get out there, though.
I bet they won't.
I'll say they can go extra innings just for you. All right. Well, first of all, this is, of course, this is for the Life Saving Crew. I wanted to let you know Nolan Stevens was going to be here with me, sends his regrets and could not be here tonight. But he put his mother on hospice this morning and he's with her right now, as he should be. So please keep the Nolan Stevens family in your prayers. Really appreciate it. But just want to take a few minutes of your time to follow up on our, when we were with you back at the April meeting. And since then, the board of directors and crew leadership have been looking at the situation from different angles. And we're currently working on a new business plan and strategic, strategic plan and business model. And what we want to maintain and grow our volunteer component, it's become evident that we've got to start looking at the Life Saving Crew more as a business than as a civic organization. If we do that, we've run some numbers, we think that we can generate more revenue, create more opportunities for growth, and continue to serve the town and the county in that way. I've been with the crew as first volunteer and former member here in recent years for forty-four years. And it's hard to make this switch. We've always been more of a civic organization service group. But again, talking to different consultants and some of you and just seeing the atmosphere in both healthcare and public service, that this is just one to have to be a change in how we do business. So we're going to go from there. So right now, we're not going to ask the council to manage or supplant our current organization. We may come back to you in coming months, but if we do, it's going to be for a specific project or piece of equipment that will be well-supported as an investment in growing the Life Saving Crew and enhancing the town's infrastructure. So keep us in your prayers, if you have any wisdom going forward. We're always are open and we'll be happy to hear from you.
Certainly. Good luck with your change that you're going through, Neil. So we all of us wish you success.
Very much.
So thank you for being here.
Yes. And we're, I did want to congratulate the town on a successful Cedar Fest. And you notice the crew was able to staff those events with a truck as well as keep a nine-one-one truck on duty. So yeah, you did well, we did well. It was a good experience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot, Dave.
All right. Just one question.
Yes, sir. So the first item that I have underneath on management report, of course, Scott and Shane and I, we've been corresponding back and forth, trying to come up with a, an estimate that we all feel really good about in regards to finishing the Russell Theater facade. And looking at, of course, the materials that it would take to finish the facade and the labor costs, the marquee and so forth, we're looking somewhere about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. And of course, Shane and Scott, you guys can chime in. I know Scott, he pretty much took care of the, getting the cost for the, for the marquee and so forth. So I don't know if you need to comment on that being documented.
Sure. Do you have, Shane, you have a copy?
I don't have a copy of that. He's going to give me one.
Well, I need you to look at it because I have a couple of questions and a couple concerns. Uh, do I keep ours just for a second?
This is just, this is marquee?
Yeah, no, it's.
I've got the little sheet that you did for.
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it.
We don't have it, do we?
You tell me that one.
Yes, yes, okay. Do you want him to go on and make copies and move on in this report and go back to this time he said, well, I didn't have a copy. I'm sorry, I wouldn't plan on talking about it, I can't help myself.
Well, go ahead and talk about it.
Shane, looking at this, what kind of format do we need this in to satisfy DHCD as a, as a cost estimate for when we bid this out? There's some redundancy here, like with the Lebanon block, like it seems like we just need the framing costs maybe from a contractor on just, on just the facade, because that'll have to be done. But there's some redundancy, like with the glasswork, for example, in Lebanon block.
Right.
And then, of course, you know, what's not on here too is pressure washing the building, reappointment of the, of the brick if we want, if it needs that. And then also Mr. Higgins quote, which I'll try to forward back to Kevin.
I realized that this afternoon before we came in here.
Yeah.
I've got Mr. Higgins' estimate right here for the, that's for the, basically show casings outside.
Gotcha.
And just that type of.
But where you've worked with DHCD, can you get this in a format that'll be acceptable to them as far as?
They're not real picky about how you line item or so to speak. But Kevin does have a sheet where we already been working on.
Yeah.
And I had sent him that, so he's got that. And that's what I used when I was coming up with that. So we've got a budget format that shows line item by line item. So yeah, we can, we can break this into that and it'll show, it'll show each, each line item, it'll show each cost.
Do they allow a little bit of contingency too? Like the land group put it in in our other elements.
You almost need to do ten, almost ten percent of this contingency. I was thinking about that this afternoon after Kevin and I met, I was like, you know, we need to put some wiggle room in there, we want to show. The basic, every time we did a project, there was always about ten percent contingency. So I would consider ten percent contingency, just, just so you have some space to, because, I mean.
Mayor, just, just let the council know, the, the reason I, what we ran into with, with different elements is where our cost estimate come in a lot lower than the actual bid document. And then we had to start cutting stuff out to make the budget right. So this is just, instead of land group doing this for us, we're able to do it, save ourselves a lot of money. But this is just a cost estimate. And when we bid it out, then the cost estimates can't come, cannot exceed the, or cannot exceed this by ten percent, right Shane?
Or they won't fund it.
Or they won't fund all of it, so to speak.
Well, they'll make us rebid.
So, so you know, I'm not trying to run the cost up for the, for the town, but it's advantageous thus if, if it's a good, solid estimate and not too conservative, because we don't want the bids to come in over and then, and then DHCD won't let us award the contract.
So are we, in your vision, I know we've been working on it, we've talked about getting this together, I guess in my mind, the phrase you're talking about, how close are we to actually beating out with the sidewalk?
You mean with DHCD Wednesday?
Yes.
Can we get, we're going to do budget revisions to kind of see how much.
That's what we have to do first.
Okay.
We got to know what we have in that budget revision that we're going to have towards the theater facade. And Debbie's been working on that. So she's going to present, she's, she's working those numbers, she's going to present that to us Wednesday, she hopes.
Oh, okay.
So Wednesday, we hope we have that in hand.
All right.
And then if, if, you know, at the, at that meeting, if we're good with that, then she can start working that up to do the request for the amounts.
Okay.
And then we can, we'll get you.
So we got to wait until we approve the, before we bid.
Right. So we don't know how much to ask for because we don't, because DHCD is going to want to see it on paper first, how much is left over before we can ask. Obviously, we want to want a big piece of this to be covered by grant funds.
Right. So once we see what's left from the pots that we're not, that's what we're doing. We, we're doing a revision of that budget. And it looks, just from what Debbie's saying, there's about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars left. And my suggestion to you all was, was half that. Half of it go towards your street skate, half of it go towards your volunteer and your facade for the theater. And that way, it doesn't look like the town's grabbing everything for their bill. See what I'm saying?
Now, let Scott and Shane, the figure you all talked about, like a hundred and seventy thousand, that figure, does that include the marquee?
Yes.
That's what this one.
The marquee is ninety thousand dollars.
So in front of the building, the size, and the glass in the building.
It's the doors, it's the box office.
And it also includes your, your cleaning of the brick and if we have to re-mortar any of that down inside, because anything you can see from Main Street, we can use these dollars.
In this, in our current downtown rate.
We got an estimate from Donnie Higgins on the showcase boxes out front. We're not going to restore the old ones, but the, but it'll be similar to the old ones in dimensions and aesthetics.
Good deal. All right. Is it any questions at this point from council? Are we good for Kevin to go along?
All right. Good deal. The next time that I was wanting to talk about, and Mayor, you can chime in there, we, we went out and got some bids, and you can see it there in front of you. Point Broadband, we received one service. And what we did is we basically sent out what we wanted. We actually met with most of our department heads just to sit down to see as far as their internet, how many phones each department had and so forth. But we also met with Carlton, which is our IT personnel that helps us with our network and so forth, to make sure that we were presenting something that made sense for, for these two companies to bid on. And the first one is Point Broadband and which they came in somewhere around sixteen, sixty-nine oh one, so just under seventeen hundred dollars. Then we, who was?
Hang on.
I'm sorry. I did the math, it's basically.
Because it's for each department. They bid it out for each department. So yeah, just by doing the math and how much it would be, and that would be.
Eight hundred and twelve dollars?
That's for the phone services.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's sort of split out, so they've got a lot of information in here. So what I did is I just added up all the numbers. And basically, the, the bid comes out to be sixteen, sixty-nine oh one, which is just under seventeen hundred dollars.
Sixteen, sixty-nine oh one?
Yes. Sixteen, sixty-nine oh one.
And that's per man?
Yes.
All right.
Phone and internet?
Phone and internet. And of course, we also sent out the same exact information, just to make sure that Zap is accurate to Chantel. And if you look on the very last page, on page, well, on page five.
Fifty-two hundred dollars.
Their, their bid is fifty-two, thirty-six.
Oh, I guess Miss Stanley have a recommendation on that?
Yeah, I think she probably will.
Any questions? So when you said, are we, do these match up or are we impairing as we say apples that?
Yeah. And what I did is I gave both the exact sheets to both parties and said, I need this, DHCD all the way through, how many phones, what internet. And they went with that and came back with the bid from each one.
Very good.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, are these comparable speeds?
Yes.
This is a lot of information that's in your compare on the, you know, ones, their comparable speeds.
And they both are fiber connections.
And when Kevin and I talk about these, the difference is that Point Broadband can offer all of this in-house. They are one hundred percent set up to offer this to us. Chantel has to service some of it out because they don't have, yeah, so because they don't have the capability that Point Broadband does. And that is why you see, under each department, you see those different charges. And those would be those where they would have to, you know, take care of each one individually, whereas Point Broadband is taking care of the whole thing.
So will this become effective, Kevin, if we agree to move forward?
Well, that's when I'll have to reach out to George. He said probably give me maybe, I think he said four, six or so weeks out to, you know, to get everything turned around. So it'll, it'll take us a little bit of time to get it resolved.
Well, I certainly appreciate you gathering this information. This is something, of course, Miss Stanley and a lot of council members have been trying to clarify and try to help provide service to reasonable cost.
Yeah.
With that said, is there, does council wish to make a motion accepting a bid tonight?
Mr. Duddy, I would like for us to accept Point Broadband's bid to change our internet service one hundred percent to one, to Point Broadband.
I'll say.
We have a motion in second. Need further discussion? I'm favor say aye.
Aye.
Others same say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good job.
The swim team, Billy, we were looking at, to see what it would basically take. My paper here is right in here. Basically, we were looking at a ten by sixteen building over next to the pool and Shane, you can chime in any time. But we met with Robbie and Billy and everybody that would be involved and also Hank, to see about where we can actually locate this building without, you know, building over top of a water line or sewer line or so forth. And then we also, we had Mr. Steffi to also meet us there. So we all met to make sure what's what, what size actually would work, to allow us to still be able to have our bucket truck to drive through there, to work on our lights if we need to, if we have room to bring the pump out with the truck and so forth. So all of that was resolved. So basically, we've come up with a ten by sixteen building, which is not much smaller than the existing building that's beside it. The existing building is a twelve by sixteen. And of course, we have our pump controls and so forth in there for the splash pad. So obviously, this building will suffice the needs for the swim team. But we also met with Alyssa to sort of give her an idea where was that and how, you know, they can basically take all their equipment and so forth. So what we got, if I could paint a picture basically, is we have this ten by sixteen building where the, the double gates that comes out of the pool, you'll open those gates and watch they have like a sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, that will basically go right into the building part of it and be like a garage door to open, slide up and down and so forth. That way, they can just come straight off, straight out of the pool into the, the building and take their equipment and so forth, just right out, you know, and actually be able to walk on concrete. But then we also have a sidewalk that comes out of the corner right there at the, at the swimming pool. There's a small gate there that you can actually go in and out from that area. We're also going to put a sidewalk from there that actually goes down the hill and intercept, it lets up against the existing sidewalk. And Shane was mentioning it would be convenient for like some of the kids and so forth to be able to go back and forth from the pool to the splash pad and so forth, so it'd be a good walkway. So with that being said, hopefully that gives you a little bit of an idea of what we're trying to do. We're trying to make it to where there's concrete, you know, that connects the pool area to the, to the building and then from the pool area to the splash pad. So we got with Robbie, Robbie basically coming up with an estimate on what the cost would be. So my suggestion, and we can talk about it, my suggestion would be to let Robbie to go ahead, take care of all the concrete, the sidewalks, and you can go ahead and take care of the concrete for the building. That way, if we want to go ahead and let Steffi to. That way, if we want to go ahead and let Steffi to build from the floor up, it would be a whole lot cheaper doing that. So I've got some figures here, just to give you an idea. So with Robbie to do all his work, which is all the concrete, sidewalk, both of the sidewalks, and the flooring of the building, it's forty-six eighty-five ninety. So it's basically forty-seven hundred dollars. Forty-six eighty-five ninety, which is that. Yeah, for the concrete. Okay? And of course, Steffi, if we wanted him to go ahead and build it from the floor up, he gave me a quote of fifty-eight hundred dollars. And that's just strictly his labor. And then he figured the material should be somewhere under six thousand dollars. So a total cost to do this, we're looking at sixteen thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-five ninety cents. So basically, sixteen five will take care of this project. And the labor that we'll be paying, basically, keep with a fifty-eight hundred.
Have any idea how soon, or how long it would take for, to get, once the concrete's done, to get the building done?
Well, he didn't comment on how quickly he can do it. But obviously, I wouldn't think it would take too long, was just because it's just a small building.
Well, the swim team starts to like...
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I'm sure he'll jump on it just as soon as possible. And I could have Robbie to go ahead and go forward. And obviously, we'll want all the concrete done and finished, and then we can let him come in and go from there.
That's pretty reasonable.
And they're storing their equipment right now in the splash pad hunk room. And they moved it out tonight. And my corner here is empty, where the diving boards are. So they're gonna leave it there on the deck where it's empty.
Around the corner?
Yes.
The pump house?
Yeah, the pool right there.
Yeah, pool pump house.
Just the road, the lane lines though?
Yes.
Not, not the diving, not the kickboards and...
No, none of that, no, they do that. They'll put it back in there.
Okay.
But they, so they have storage right now. So, because it's empty, only thing that's in there now is the, is the pump rooms.
Okay.
I think Keith will have it built down in three days. If all the materials are there, it'll be done in two or three days. Does the swim team do any time with fundraising, Shane?
They do. I don't, I don't know the gist of it. I know they have entry fees, of course, which is when they sign up the kids, I think it's, I want to say forty-five dollars. I'm not sure, it's something like that.
It wa, it's forty-five dollars, and so that doesn't raise a whole lot of money, just because they don't want to charge too much money for kids to be a part of the swim team. They are their own entity, they're not part of the town. But they do sell T-shirts, they'll sell like bags, like swim team bags to carry their stuff that is a fundraiser. They'll sell concessions that helps to raise money for them. But it's, it's more of a service, it's not just for, it's not for profit. You know, they try and do as much as they can to lower the costs for the kids, so they can participate in the swim team. Before, when we had the old building, the swim team had their own room. And it was just their room, they had a key to it, nobody was in and out of there, nobody guarded our stuff. You know, so I think when the new building was built, that was kind of the idea, that we would be able to store their stuff. So this building will allow them to keep all of their stuff in there, their tables, their coolers. We've had, you know, we can talk about it, and too, they've had some of their stuff lost, to where it would be, you know, just for them, not get lost.
I guess a concern of mine, I probably should have asked this question prior, is, are we using town payer tax dollars to fund a private entity?
No, you're not. It's a public entity. It's for the citizens of town. It's all, they're, they're not a private for profit organization.
They're not for profit, they're non-profit.
Shane, you plan on storing other stuff, these buildings, we have...
I think we can do that years if we have something.
I'm hoping there's room, because we got a lot of pool furniture. And we've been, we've been lugging that back and forth from either the counter or the shop, since we built the building, because there's just no place to store it there. We, you know, when Mark left, he did a little attic space. You know, it's great space, but, I mean, you can't fit this stuff up in the attic. It just won't fit through the doorway. I mean, it's great space, like, like we're going to store our flags and stuff, banners. It's awesome space, I mean, you've been up there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a great space, we can clean, I mean, it's, it's really nice. We'll be able to organize those banners and get to them when we want to. So it's great space, but the pool deck stuff, there's no way it can go in there. I mean, there's just no way. So this past year, I put all the tables and all the chairs in the splash pad hunk room. I mean, it was from floorboard to ceiling, but I got it in there. If we could add a little bit more space, which I think we will, because their stuff doesn't take up that much room, because we've put it in there, and there's still room in the splash pad hunk room. So, I mean, I'm not talking like a lot, but we would still, what we, what we could use excess of, we would definitely use it for the pool deck stuff.
So, they can use that building to store somewhere? Pool deck fixtures?
Yeah, and that way, and that way, then that, I mean, every year we're saying, Billy, where's his, where's his?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So now, it'll all be in one location, I feel like.
Okay.
Because we already got most of it in the splash pad hunk room. So this, this will give us a little bit more room or two with the pools, with the swim team stuff. And I, I think it'll be a lot better.
And this building mainly is for those lane lines?
Yeah, well...
I mean, it's for the other stuff.
Well, and too, and see, right now, we could actually put those lane lines in that splash pad, but they don't, but they don't... If we had a garage door on it, they'd go in and out, but they don't have a garage door. So the gar, that's why we're doing the garage door on the new one, so that we can roll those in there.
But, but you would say that, as Scott said, you would also be able to use that?
For excess storage, yes, for the pool, for the pool furniture stuff, everything that's there. We'd be able to keep years that go hundreds down when we get rid of it.
May, to touch on Elijah's comment, to clarify that up. That equipment is town property, right? Town, town owners purchased that material years ago.
And has, and has upkept that.
It's ours, though.
Yeah, that's our equipment, and we need somewhere to keep our equipment.
And plus, like, you know, Shane answered there too, and this is what Elijah's questioning. If we're actually, if we're not just going to use it, we're going to use, it's have a multipurpose use for pool deck, our equipment to go in there.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we, we...
You're trying to get everything on one site, instead of spreading it out and...
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
Mayor, my only concern is being exclusive with Keith Steffi. And our purchase policy, to remind the council that anything over five thousand to thirty thousand dollars shall require two red quotes. So I think just for the, not giving the perception that Keith Steffi gets all the work, we do what we've done on other projects. We need to get at least one more quote to meet our own policy. And I know that time is the essence on this project, I know nobody will do a better job than Keith. But I just think that unfortunately, we need to move forward with the concrete work, approve it, and get a second quote for the contract work.
Is he working somewhere else now, or is he doing it in the other?
Really, he's working for us at J S Eastleigh Park, and working at the theater still, I think, right now.
That's what I'm saying, I see, or be, I can do it.
Well, he's, he's down with electrician plugs in the theater. He's managing that, subcontractors. And I believe he's finished with, he ninety-nine percent finished with the, the signs at Easterly and the saw waste, so I think we're about ready to put the signs up, so... I don't know how long it takes, I mean, you want to do that, you want to do that clean now in July? Or clean now in next week?
Honestly, I'd like, as soon as Kevin can get another quote, and I'd like to move forward with the project. And I, I think even if Kevin gets another quote, it won't pull us up, and if he can start the concrete work and get that additional quote, the first time that we meet together, that he has this, at least another quote, we can make a decision.
Is that current building out there, Kevin, is that a, is that a stick-built building on a concrete foundation? Or is it a pre-built?
It's a concrete, but it's a metal building. I don't think it's wood inside.
No, I think it's all, it's all metal, it's just a...
Yeah, it's all concrete.
So are we going back with the, with the same-looking building here? I mean, I would imagine, if it's a sixteen by ten, both, we, we're going to spend sixteen grand on a storage building. Why not make it look just like one of the other?
Yeah.
Is it going to be a metal building?
Same metal building?
I mean...
It'll be a post-steel building.
Yeah, it'll be just like the building.
Just like so.
It's not steel, then.
So two separate, I mean, do they, they will be...
Yeah, they'll be two separate buildings.
Okay.
Just because of the elevation differences.
Same color metal and everything.
That's what I'm going to watch, this, this is a yes or no question. Well, Elijah just asked, I know what the splash pad building looks like.
Right.
The proposed building, is it going to look just like that?
Yeah.
Except a garage door?
Yeah, it'd have a garage door.
Okay.
That's a sixteen by ten.
It'll be just as...
I'm asking for it.
Oh, so...
I want it to look identical to what we have.
Well, the problem is...
You don't have room?
We don't have the room to take the bucket truck around through it. This causes more head, what it is, we've got a light over there on that side, and we need to get a bucket truck to it, you know, the street light.
Alright, so we're leaving here, turning Robbie loose on the concrete part of this. Is that correct, on the council side? And you're going to give another quote for the steel, host built?
Right.
Been good, have it next Monday?
I'll do my best.
Since we meet here.
Mr. Doby, can we tell the council what we have to do for the swim team? Just since he's talking about it.
Yeah. It's only, it's going to be legal, aren't we?
Okay. Okay, so I'll move forward with Robbie's crew and the portion that he'll be responsible for. The next item, this is something that me and Brad, we've been in contact...
Yeah, I hate to interrupt, but are we just moving on, or what? We'll move on until we get another quote.
We're getting, we're getting a quote?
We're getting ready for a slab.
Ask the question, so they all hear it. Joe, hear any questions?
We're getting ready to initiate a sixteen thousand dollar project. Should we make a motion on that, and should we not make a motion on that?
Paul, I said, do we need to move it on? Well, the only way, I think, if we're going to spend nine thousand dollars on concrete, let's say, do we need to vote to move on, and then we get these quotes on this? Are we going to do, are we committing ourselves to do the building?
That's what I'm saying, do we need to move on? That's what he's asking.
Well, we've got forty-six hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety cents in concrete.
Right.
Fifty-eight hundred in labor and six thousand in materials. So the actual building itself is eleven thousand eight hundred dollars, it's just the forty-six eighty-five ninety is just concrete.
So is that what you're asking to do a motion of?
I'm asking on the whole project in general. When this, I mean, should we make a motion to approve the project, or does someone want to make a motion on it? I'd say we don't make a motion until we get the other quote, and see if we have a consensus to move forward with the project.
But at least, um, the concrete first.
Move on with the concrete. Don't move, just hold off until we get that second quote. When we have that quote, we move forward. Just in case something flashes up and we don't want to do it.
I agree.
May not be anybody available. Keith may not be available.
May not be.
Right?
That now terms material, you really need to be ready, man.
Yeah, okay.
We're going this route.
Okay.
So at this time, the swim team building is taped.
So the only thing I want to move forward on is getting another quote, and we're going to read the name.
We're holding up our term agreement, and I'll let you next Monday.
Okay. Alright. Moving on to the next item, this is something that Brad and I have been talking about. And Brad wanted me to add this under my report, so we could discuss it. And that is the send-offs quote, it should be located in the back of your packet. It's under information, and it's probably about halfway, halfway back. Just go up to you see the, the quote there.
Stupids, right?
Alright. This is a uniform company, and this is a quote that was given to me, and Brad, I'll turn it over.
At one of our previous meetings, we, I think it might have been a budget meeting, we were discussing the uniform rates. And as I reviewed those, I thought that they seemed a little bit steep, you know, and there's, I know there's different options, I've worked and had several different uniform companies service while I worked. I don't have the air mark papers that we use now, I don't have that total, but we can add it to this. We're paying each week, we're paying air mark, on average, about seven hundred dollars a week.
We being who?
The town lead.
Okay.
And proposed in front of you is about a hundred and twenty dollars cheaper per week at five hundred and seventy-three dollars. And that's apples to apples, everything's the same. And I think they've even spoke to some of our employees, and could even upgrade us to, upgrade our uniforms that our guys wear, to uniform colored pants, better shirts.
In this price, under this price?
Yeah.
Do we have a contract?
There is no contract.
No contract?
There's, there's change.
Free size changes.
Hundred, hundred twenty dollars less sales? Per month? That's pretty good. That per month, per week?
Per week.
Per week? More than that, I don't know, a month?
In the council's budget, I think, what was, air mark thirty-two, right? Yeah, so on average, it's seven hundred, that would be thirty-six thousand four hundred a year. And proposed here is twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and two.
Okay. So we're considering...
That's sixty-six thousand dollars a year.
There are the same thing we're getting, on this list is what we're getting.
Yes. So on average, that's what we're looking at.
Purposes of discussion, Brad, I think we should have put a motion on the floor.
We discuss it, Mayor.
Well, you can discuss it, but you need, I'd like to put a motion on the floor.
I would like to make a motion that we switch our uniform service to, from air mark to send-offs.
Is there a second?
One second.
Alright, discussion, put a motion on the floor.
I'd like to discuss a couple of things here. How many of our employees actually, or do all employees, are they involved in the uniform program? So his numbers here are for all the employees. So air marks numbers would be elevated due to not all employees participating. Is that correct?
Yeah.
My next question is, has anybody looked at purchasing uniforms versus renting uniforms?
You know, Kevin, you know...
I think in a blue collar environment, like we have rental services, would be a better fit for our employees.
The purpose being, our keep is clean, and they look, they're saying that...
They're harder to keep up with, they're tracked through send-offs, they're tracked by barcode, and you know they're clean.
We are in a contract with air mark for masks at the community center.
We are in a contract with air mark for mats at the community center.
For what?
Mats.
The mats.
So Shane signed the contract. I'm sure we negotiated that contract last July.
That's what I asked, it was a contract.
Just a matter of time.
When I asked, when I asked a couple of people, they told me we weren't, I asked them, she said we were in a contract. Okay, we'll follow up.
So we provide this, this provides it to every employee, Brad?
Yes. And this takes something we need to rush. If you'd like for me to arrange, uh, Claude Nestor was the seller, if you'd like for me to have him come to a meeting, I know he would want to be.
I'd like, yeah.
Yeah, this don't have to be rushed.
What about, uh, that, how long, what is the contract that air mark for the mats?
I don't know, he said David Lee told her it was up, but I talked to the air mark guy last week, and he told me that he was willing to go down to one mat and to keep, I just contract, you know, that we wouldn't break the contract.
Thank you. We'd have to buy out that contract first.
The mat?
I'd be more than happy to cut those mats in half.
Can you withdraw your motion, Brad, please?
Sure.
Do they want a contract, Brad?
No.
And Brad? I'd like to look at uniforms versus fixtures and other things, you know what I'm saying? Cause I talked to Diane today about it, when I read over accounts payable, uh, we hadn't talked to Shane about it, but, um, I don't remember the astronomical number we're paying for mats over there for rental, but, you know, what we did here at the town hall, I think we purchased them, uh, through Dominion, and it would be more cost effective, literally, to purchase them and toss them when they get more out.
I think items like that would be different than our uniforms, for sure. We paid air mark thirty-one forty-seven eighty-four on five thirty-one twenty-one. Three thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. If that's a one-year contract, Mr. Diane, that's about a hundred percent, that's gonna be up in August, because I remember having Shane renegotiate that during, uh, Jim's meeting, we had to cut that.
Well, I think.
Kevin, are you, are you tied up tomorrow?
I think they have a call on that.
Can you meet, Rob's gonna be in town tomorrow.
Okay.
Can you meet him after eleven?
Yeah.
Can Howard give you his number?
Yeah.
We should have an email too.
Yeah, right, yeah.
He's gonna be in Latman anytime after eleven, and Kevin can report back to us with these questions on Monday.
Well, in theory, you might as well take mats off at this rate.
Okay.
Cause it's a variety of concrete, but, so Brad's with his motion, Mary's with her second, and we're tabling sentos until the, the next meeting, okay?
Okay.
I'd like, also, Kevin, council be agreeable to make, move item six to the last item on your report, and do the seven, eight, nine first. Start with the new bathroom, move Sky Solar to last on your.
Oh, okay, I see, I see.
Mayor, can we back up just for a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I know you want to move forward, but Elijah and Brad, I'm gonna forward you this invoice. Uh, the community mats itself are over three hundred dollars a week at the community center. That's twelve hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month for mats. And it's got, it's got everything broke down, shop uniforms, shop towels, administrative mats, street uniforms, administrative uniforms, it's got the whole breakdown, and I think it's.
Is that rental?
This is the three thousand dollar, uh, invoice that we get, Elijah just called, this is the breakdown of that invoice that we get, I mean, that we're paying every month.
I know what I was saying, are we, we're renting the mats?
Yeah, I think they changed.
We don't own the mats.
Right.
Would it be cheaper to own the mats?
Yes.
Just go out and buy some mats, is my question, instead of renting. You don't want contracts over them, do you?
I would change the state.
What Chris Diane was saying is they're willing to back off on the new rats over there to keep, to keep a regular contract.
Okay.
I mean, it looks like, it's almost like carpet.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think if we keep one mat, we may not be in violation.
That's what he said.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, thank you.
Sure. Okay, Kevin.
Uh, Chris just reminded me that if we wanted to get out of that contract, if we're still under the contract, then all we gotta do is give a written notice in thirty days. So if we are under contract and we still want to, all we gotta do is just have a written notice of getting out, so, just so that you'll know.